Okay. Good morning, everybody! Thank you for participating to this first session in the morning: Climate Change Mitigation Strategies at Urban and Territorial Scales, Modelling Tools and Quantitative Impact Assessments. We will have four speakers, I already explained. Paper number 84 has been deleted. Marlene Bora wrote us several days ago, anticipating this. And the session will be organized in this way: We will have the whole presentation without questions and at the end of the session we will have a very good discussion because in this case we have also more time because we have also the time for the speaker. And I asked to... First speaker is Giulia Benati. She presented a paper developed with Federico Martellozzo: "Decrease of the value of the regulating ecosystem services of CO2 captured by urban trees due to the increase of soil consumption: A quantification of the phenomenon in Rome." The floor is yours, Giulia.
Correct. Okay, I am sharing my screen. Okay, can you all see it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, good morning, everybody, and thank you very much to the organizer of this online conference in pandemic times. So let me introduce myself. I am Giulia Benati. I am an environmental engineer and a PhD candidate in Economic Geography at the University La Sapienza, Rome. And I am presenting this paper, which I wrote with my supervisor Federico Martellozzo from Università degli Studi di Firenze. And the title is: "The decrease of the value of the regulating ecosystem service of CO2 capture by urban trees due to the increase of cell consumption: A quantification of the phenomenon in Rome." So let me start introducing the relevance of the topic. It is relevant both for European policies and scientific literature, which are paying increasing attention to the contribution that the ecosystem services provide, provided from the presence of vegetation in cities to urban planning and to the European Sustainable Development objectives. So the Sustainable Development Goals take into account in particular the ecosystem services in the XI goal, which is sustainable cities and communities. In particular, the target 11.3 has the objective of reaching a sustainable urbanization within 2030 and the indicator 11.3.1 tries to quantify a sustainable urbanization by measuring the ratio of land consumption rate to population worth rate. Also, scientific amounting body of scientific literature highlighted how cell consumption is strictly related to the desperation of the value of ecosystem services, in particular urban ecosystem services, and of course of decreased quality of human life in cities. Also, in particular, we are in this case focusing on the urban ecosystem services provided by urban trees. And one important ecosystem service provided by urban tree is compensating the CO2 emission through carbon sequestration and storage. This service has positive effect on important phenomenon in the urban context such as reducing pollution and protecting human health. So it appears evident that it is crucial to quantify the value of the ecosystem services to define and to work towards the objectives of sustainable development. And the objective of the paper here is to quantify the effect of soil consumption on the particular ecosystem service, which is in the class of regulating ecosystem services of CO2 retention provided by urban trees. And we are taking as a case study the city of Rome, not only because it's my city so I have more data on it, but also because it's particularly relevant being the most populous and largest city in Italy, the third largest city in the European Union and the one with the higher extent of green areas. And it is a city where the cell consumption is particularly impacting and it's actually increasing over time. And we found that in the study that it's actually not even driven by population dynamics as it was in the past. So let me jump to our methodology. In order to quantify the impact of the cell consumption on this particular ecosystem service of carbon sequestration provided by trees, we had firstly to base our analysis on the data that we had from the census of trees from the municipality of Rome of the number of species of trees. We divided our analysis for 15 different municipalities that we have in Rome. And so we collaborated a value that we called economic unitary value average tree that represents the value in euros of the kilograms of CO2 absorbed per year for an average tree for each municipality. So firstly, we measured the kilograms per year that is absorbed by an average tree for each municipality. And then we multiplied it for the... Let's say the estimate of a value per tonne of the CO2 market of the CO2 based on the CO2 market values. Then we had to quantify the extension of the area for each municipality covered by trees. And for doing that, we used, as in the whole project, layer provided by the European project Copernicus in order to allow replicability and a possible confrontation. So we used the high resolution layer tree cover density and with various elaborations such as spatial statistics, we detected the area covered by trees for each municipality. And then we just multiplied the area covered by trees for the value of that average economic unitary value of an average tree, of course normalized by the area covered by a single tree and necessary for the elaboration. And we obtained the first desired result, which is the value in euros per year of this ecosystem service of CO2 retention provided by trees in Rome for each municipality. Then we wanted to estimate how big is the impact of soil consumption in Rome on this ecosystem service. So we took another layer from the project Copernicus, which is of course available for all Europe, and which is Urban Atlas Change. And we studied and analyzed the change between the year 2012 and 2018. And so we selected the change of cover, of land cover, from artificial to... from natural to artificial. And we selected these classes and we overlaid it with the first layer of tree cover. And so we found the area of... For each municipality, which is covered, which was covered by trees, which was lost between these years due to soil consumption. And we found therefore a loss measured in annual euros. And what we found is that between 2012 and 2018, their value per year is 1 million euros for the whole city of Rome and that the municipalities that had the greatest loss were the ones that were more peripheral. And of course, as we could expect, the ones that had the less loss were the most central and most densely built up. And it is quite a massive effect. And also we have to consider that it is an annual effect. Therefore, it's reductive with respect to the magnitude of the phenomenon in general. And this analysis for us was particularly important because it firstly gave evidence of an effect of the phenomenon of land consumption of the particular ecosystem service of CO2 retention by the urban trees. And also it gave us a quantification of this effect. Also, we did an analysis in a predicting perspective. So we measured how... We gave an estimate actually of how this ecosystem service will decrease in the future thanks to a predictive model for 2025 for the increase in soil consumption. And we elaborated an estimate of 4.2 million euros per year lost due to soil consumption. So what can we observe from these results? Well firstly, that land consumption has actually an important effect on the loss of this regulating ecosystem service provided by urban trees. And also that if it is not properly regulated, its loss will be higher in the future. Also, it makes us reflect on the need for holistic policies, which are not monosectoral. So we cannot just focus in order to obtain a reduction in air pollution and increase in human health only on CO2 emission or on the urban tree provided by the municipalities in the cities, but also we have to focus on the related policy that address this topic such as, of course, soil, in this case soil consumption. So in this manner, we would activate rather ambitious or virtuous cycle. And also, we observed and we believe that the use of quantifiable indicators is key because we have... We need to compare results both in different areas of a single city and among different cities in Europe that can allow us to adopt appropriate local governance policies in order to address the sustainable problem, sustainability problem. And in this case, the CO2 compensating strategy and also to plan European common strategy that can be consistent with the intent of developing a set of indicators for the Sustainable Development Goals. And not only to describe the phenomena themselves, but also it can be very useful to develop a set of indicators for the Sustainable Development Goals that quantify the relation among different phenomena. And yes, so thank you for your attention and I hope not take too much time. And if you have any question, you can ask me later or feel free to write me to my email. Thank you.
Thank you, Giulia. You have perfect time. We started with a small delay. No, I prefer that all questions will be addressed at the end during the final discussion because we have time also. 20 minutes, but other 15 minutes because one presentation is missing. I also said to Xiang He that he wrote a question in the chat and you can ask this question in the final discussion. Otherwise, I will read this question during the discussion. Okay, thank you, Giulia, for your interesting stimulating presentation. We can move to the second speaker. I saw Sabrina Li in the list. This means that she solved all the problem with the connection. Sabrina Li from the University of Cagliari. The presentation is "Synergies and trade-offs in ecosystem services provision: identifying spatial bootling in Sardinia." You can start.
Thank you. Beniamino, can you hear me?
Yes, start.
Okay, can you see my PowerPoint?
Yes, you can also full screen, put the full screen.
Does it work for you here?
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, everybody, and apologies for the technical inconvenience. So my presentation is about ecosystem service provision and I'm looking at how they interact, so both synergies and trade-off by looking at Sardinia as a case study. So this is the layout of the presentation, the five classical items. I'm going to start with the definition that the European Commission gave in 2003 of green infrastructures, which in the decision of the Commission are strategically planned networks of nature and semi-nature areas that are designed and managed to deliver a wide range of ecosystem services, where ecosystem services, as in the image to the right-hand side, are the goods and service that nature provides us with. They can be both tangible and intangible. So we have some examples here. So food, clean air, clean water, outdoor recreation. But from a natural scientist's point of view, this definition is problematic in two ways. First, the perspective is that of people. So nature needs to be managed so that it can deliver good to people, not something that is valuable person. And second, the definition says that a wide range of ecosystem services are provided. This implies that they can be delivered at the same time. And actually, some authors pointed out that some ecosystem services are jointly provided and intertwined. So it is sometimes difficult to tell them apart. But other authors have pointed out that some ecosystem services can be detrimental to others. So for instance, agriculture and food benefits such as wood, food, timber can often be dangerous for other ecosystem services. So in this study, I tried to attempt multifunctionality, so the extent to which some ecosystem services can be provided at the same time. And the ultimate goal of this is to understand whether territorial specialization areas can be defined, so areas that provide a similar abundance of ecosystem services. This would be useful in planning processes to ground policy decisions in these areas. As a case study, Sardinia is selected. It is an island in the Mediterranean, which is a very low density, very low residential density compared to Italy and to Europe. And this coupled with the low level of infrastructure and the persistence of agriculture and farming traditional practices has contributed to preserving good levels of naturalness. And good levels of naturalness are necessary to deliver ecosystem services. The scale of the scale I'm looking at is that of municipalities because in Italy they are responsible for planning processes and land use changes have been proven to be the most important factor in assessing, in impacting on ecosystem service delivery. So land use plans are the tool that allows for changes in the provision of ecosystem services. And so municipalities are important for this reason. As for data, I used seven ecosystem services, which my research group has studied and mapped in the past four years. So I'm going to look at habitat quality as their capacity of the environment to support the presence of species, carbon sequestration and storage as a proxy for global climate regulation, agricultural and forestry productivity, which was assessed in terms of the value of the agricultural land, ecosystem-based potential recreation, which was assessed by using the ESTIMAP model by the JRC, landscape quality, which was assessed based on the regional landscape in Sardinia. And then intrinsic value of the biodiversity, biodiversity which needs to be preserved as defined by the European Commission. And finally, regulation of land surface temperature as the capacity to regulate local climate. So I'm not going to go into the details of the models that we used to assess these. As for the methodology, after data processing, the methodology by these three authors that are listed here was... It basically consists of three steps. The first is the analysis of spatial patterns in terms comprising both spatial autocorrelation and pattern analysis in terms of hot and cold spots. And next, the analysis of correlations, which if positive, so if correlations are present, needs to be reduced, so reduction redundant, redundancies. And finally, after reducing redundancies, cluster analysis to understand which groups of municipality provide similar bundles of ecosystem services. So this is the data pre-processing, which means the mean normalized values of each ecosystem services in each of the municipalities. So a database having 377 records, as many as the municipality and as many columns as the ecosystem services was built to fit into the next step. So first, as for autocorrelation, we performed the analysis in Gioda and the analysis shows that all of the ecosystem services show evidence of spatial autocorrelation and it is statistically significant and decreases with the level of contribuity. By contribuity, we mean something like this using the Rock conceptualization. And all of them are statistically significant except the one for quality of habitat, which is not significant from the third level onwards. So there is evidence of spatial autocorrelation, which means that we can also identify groups of municipalities which have statistically higher or statistically significantly lower levels of each ecosystem services than their surroundings. So what's interesting here is that some part of the island can be either hotspots or coldspots depending on which ecosystem service we consider. For instance, this Capidano, this is the main agricultural plain in Sardinia and it has a very... It is a cold hot spot, sorry, for production, agricultural production, but this is a low... A cold spot for other ecosystem services. And similarly, other areas provide... For instance, this one is Liasstra, provides very low levels, so cold spots, significantly lower than the surroundings, but it's a hotspot for other services. So the pattern is that there's evidence of autocorrelation and that some parts of the island are specialized in providing some of the ecosystem services. But this is not enough because we have not assessed the bundles so far. Before assessing bundles, the first step is to understand whether there is correlation between the seven ecosystem services. And indeed, by using person coefficient, we can show that 16 out of the 21 possible pairs of ecosystem services are correlated. And what's interesting here is that negative correlations always concern either agricultural production or carbon sequestration. And moreover, the two are also negatively correlated, which means that these two services compete with the other and compete with each other. Person coefficient only assesses linear correlations, so it is not enough to look for coefficient and for their statistically significance. But we also need to plot the results because there might be some other kind of correlations going on. So we also plotted all of the correlations. So because there's evidence of autocorrelation, then we can say that the territory provides not single ecosystem services, but rather bundles of ecosystem services, which I'm going to look at next. Because there's correlation, then we don't need to keep all of these seven factors. And one of the most popular method to reduce redundancy is the principal component analysis, which we performed in ArcMap. And the result is that we can reduce the number of important factors. And to do this, we can use different methods. I'll try different methods, but this one is the simplest. So basically, we look at where is the elbow in the eigenvalue plot. And the immediate outcome would be to use three factors, but this only would explain sort of 85% of the variables... Oh, the variance, sorry. So I looked at the second elbow, which explains 97% of the variance. This means that I kept five factors. There's no simple and hard rule to identify the number of factors in principal component analysis. So it is very much up to the analyst. So selecting five factors means that we are looking for five clusters. And these five clusters should be composed by municipalities that are very similar to each other in terms of ecosystem service they provide. And the groups should be as different as possible. And the cluster analysis was performed by using the K-mean algorithm, which uses random seeds. So by iterating the process, you can also get different results. So this is the main result of this study. So in terms of bundles of ecosystem services, Sardinia can be divided into five clusters. Interestingly, these five clusters are not only similar in terms of bundle of ecosystem services they provide, but also in terms of the number of resources they provide. but also share some common socio-economic or ecological characteristics. So for instance, the first group, the one in Lycian, comprises coastal municipalities. They have high value of quality of the landscape and of recreation potential, so outdoor recreation. And these economies are heavily reliant tourism, and they have comparatively high level of urbanization. So the main centers of the island are comprised in this group. Second, and this group is scattered across the island. Second is the agricultural group. So here we have high values of agricultural production, sorry, and of carbon sequestration. And there are two main clusters in the two main plains of the island. Here, the agriculture is more intensive than in the rest of the island. So this municipality have higher incomes from agriculture in comparison to the rest of the island. The next two groups show similar characters in terms of ecosystem services. They have both high level of carbon sequestration. And in socio-economic terms, they are inland and smaller municipality, very sparsely populated. But there are also differences. The first has high values of regulation of local temperature and the second low values. And they have different morphologies and vegetations, which is, which means that the group four, for instance, has more gentle steeps and it has more pastures and more, more patchy vegetation. And finally, group five, which is scattered across the island, comprises the main mountains and the main forests in the island. This group is characterized by high values of all of the ecosystem services, except for agricultural production and intrinsic value of biodiversity. So the conclusions. The analysis of the ecosystem service provision has revealed that there are spatial patterns in the provision of ecosystem services. And this pattern sometimes correspond to distinctive socio-economic and ecological patterns. So there is evident, evidence of a sort of territorial specialization, which we should take into account in the design of land use plan. Because land use plan can either enhance or degrade the provision of these ecosystem services. As a word of caution, planning provisions that are aimed to improve some ecosystem services, and first and foremost is agricultural provision, should be very carefully assessed, examined, because they can lead to degradation of other ecosystem services. And such trade-offs need to be identified and carefully taken into account in planning and planning making. What I would like to do in the future is to increase the number of ecosystem services here considered and also to introduce some socio-economic variables, so as to understand whether the patterns which were preliminarily identified remains stable once that they are integrated into the model. Thank you.
Thank you Sabrina for your very stimulating presentation with a lot of models applied. I really appreciate it. As explained, all questions will be done at the end, because Tianqi has another question for you. But she will have your present, the question at the end. You finish in perfect time. So we can move to the third speaker. Estelle Manikin will present the paper European Urban Course Under Pressure, Quantifying the Congestion of Trips Into and Out From City Centers as a Function of Population Size. Other authors are Goffri Caruso, René Le Mois, Philippe Gerber, and Alex Egen Zanger. Best regard to him, because I haven't seen him for a lot of time. Okay, Estelle, you can, you can start.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Thank you very much for attending this session. I will share my screen. I hope that you can see it. And yeah, please stop me if there is any issue in between. Okay, so I'm Estelle Manikin. I'm a PhD candidate based in Luxembourg. And as you said, I am doing this research with several co-authors that are listed here. And yeah, today we talk about inbound and outbound congestion in European cities. So actually, we have quantified video travel times and we tested for city size effects as well as roads network structural effects. Yeah, and first of all, I need to stress that this is research in progress. So we present some preliminary results, but more statistical tests need to be done at the end. But I will already present to you, yeah, the rationale, the methods and some, some first conclusions. So yeah, we'll first give you some information about the context. Why am I researching this topic? So it's good to know that the present study is part of a larger endeavor to formally and empirically establish the relationship between urban form and city size. So in general, my thesis is focusing on intra-urban roads network characteristics as to other aspects of urban forms that are studied or that have already been studied. So for example, the built lands, the Greenland score, the protection, and so on, with a William on the travel information. And so yeah, I hope that this contributes to building city size via all the facets in the same fashion. So in this video perspective. So yeah, again, the question is on the words network infrastructure, which is a structured part of cities and so very stable food time. It really, it really shapes the internal ecology of cities. So here, yeah, we consider the urban roads network as the spatial distribution of the population in city. So we try to understand and to quantify traffic congestion at the scale of the entire European continent, which is a serious societal challenge, because we know that congestion is associated to several social, environmental and economic consequences. So in the literature, we often see three aspects of road congestion, which are the loss of time. So the hours of delay inducing productivity and well-being losses. We also see the excess fuel consumption and the excess emitted CO2. So these are unfavorable consequences, but of course, they have to be balanced with agglomeration benefits we see in cities. And we can cite, among others, shorter trips in high-density cities and also reduced car dependency. And then, of course, congestion relates to pressures on city planning, because when cities grow, planning strategies need to counteract the congestion, either with more transport infrastructure or, for example, with more polycentric developments. So we have the questions of the social inequality, because yeah, the levels of reachability inside cities can greatly differ across the districts. And we also have the question of social cohesion, when cities lose their central function when congestion increases too much. So yeah, to finish with this contextual part, I would like to understand which kinds of urban forms and especially which size of cities are resulting in what kind of transport-related outputs. So it's the question of agglomeration effects and all the planning implications. And we want to know whether cities are too sparse compared to their population size. So that's the general philosophy behind this research and behind most of the urban scaling literature in general. So yeah, earlier research has already shown some anometric relationships between city size and congestion. So yeah, this was to find out whether large cities were showing disproportionately higher congestion than small cities. And in general, the literature agrees on a superlinear scaling of congestion with city size. And congestion is usually measured in total at the entire scale of the city. So yeah, here we're not going to reproduce the same research, but we adopt a wider perspective in order to question the monocentricity, the monocentric cohesion of cities when they are growing bigger. So yeah, this is the last question listed here. We are looking at the world of congestion in this process of polycentralization of cities, because the historical center might become less accessible for the population when the city grows in terms of distance because of this congestion. And there is a big pressure on these central functions of the monocentric cities. So yeah, we are trying to find out whether benefits of agglomerations are lost because of the traffic. So yeah, I guess you all know this theoretical framework of the monocentric city. So we adopt this wider perspective, because it's useful methodologically, because it allows for a greater simplification of cities. And yeah, empirically, it allows us to reflect on policy instruments that are targeting accessibility inequalities in this wider perspective. So yeah, we, we can address all the policies that are tackling the core versus the peripheries. We are working on three hundred and three European functional urban areas that range between thirty thousand and two million inhabitants in Europe. So we use the Urban Atlas dataset, from which we extract the residential land use cells at the twenty square meters resolution. And yeah, here, the functional urban areas are defined by the limits of the city center's employment attraction zone. So all people in these zones are supposed to live and work in these areas. And then, so yeah, after we extracted these, these wet cells of urban fabric, we overlap it with a second data set, which is the U.S. population grid, the resolution of one square kilometer. And then, yeah, this overlapping of the two data sets is used to sample actually the potential residences and to compute the fastest routes between these origins and the city center. So there is one unique origin per city and several destination and several origins. So yeah, here you can see the path taken by the supposedly citizens to reach the city centers. So this is an example for one of the three hundred cities. Then we use the Google Directions API to compute the fastest routes to the center. We compute these potential trips, so yeah, these distance, these time distances every hour around the clock, so for the twenty-four hours of the day. So for a typical weekday, a Tuesday, and we compute, so the, the arrivals so between four AM and eleven AM. And then the reverse trips to the periphery between noon and three AM. So we have all these eighteen hours making for more than seven million of simulated trips. So this is the data structure just for one trip in one city. And you have to think that we have three hundred and cities and more or less, yeah, on average, one hundred thousand trips in each city. So again, between the urban fabric cells and the center. So yes, we have this twenty-four hours of the day travel time profiles. And we can already identify the maximum trip duration for the inbound trips and the outbound trips and the minimum trip durations for the corresponding directional trips. So you see that we have very localized peaks. So yeah, we identify these peaks for each trip. So later on, we can calculate the excess travel time when we compare the max to the minimum travel times. Then at the aggregated scale of cities, we can identify the inbound and outbound congestion peaks and the free flow hour, or more, the possible departure times for each city to better understand travel behaviors in urban areas. And yeah, this identification of wash hours is also again useful in policymaking. So yeah, we select one highest frequency of maximum trip duration in the morning and then one in the evening. So yeah, we see how many cities have a peak traffic for trips. For example, it's eight AM and the peak traffic for five AM. These are the most frequent wash hours in our cities database. And then, yeah, we have the corresponding free flow times. We also differentiate between inbound and outbound trips, even if the, the minimum travel times are similar. But yeah, it's to respect the direction of the trip. So here it's the same results, but just mapped at the European scale. So yeah, we, we just observed that the inbound peaks seem to be later in Mediterranean cities. So we observe some north-south spatial heterogeneity here. Then we do a descriptive analysis of travel times. And we study the spatial heterogeneity of congestion across Europe. So we, we want to understand the congestion levels in the light of city area and population density. So we compute four congestion indices. So we have each time two indices weighted by area and two indices weighted by population and two absolute indices taking just the absolute travel time and two relative indices taking into account the trip lengthening. So when we relate the excess travel time to the minimum travel time, so travel time in free flow. So yeah, I'm not going into the details, but for example, for the A index, it's simply the excess travel time multiplied by the area-weighted index, which is, yeah, some kind of surface density, calculating the area covered by the urban fabric cells in the total city area covered by this squares of one square kilometer. And then, yeah, here we do, with some overall points to do an arithmetic mean. And here we have some geometric means, because we have relative travel times. So yeah, here is the table of the summary statistics of these four congestion indices. And we always differentiate between the inbound and outbound trips. So on average, the, the time losses are smaller for return trips to the periphery in the second part of the day than for trips to the center during the first part of the day. So this shows that traffic is more concentrated at one specific time in the morning, while it's more distributed in the evening or second part of the day to the periphery due to activities after work. And then, yeah, the organization of roads, such as what? And then, um, yeah, the organization of roads, uh such as, for example, uh one-way streets or traffic lights. Also designed to faster leave an urban center and to enter this urban center. Um, so yeah, this is the summary statistics table for the the full. The for the comprehensive table of congestion per city. Uh, and here we rank the cities based on their total population. And we color the cells based on the relative importance of their indices compared to other cities. Um. So yeah, we think we have a very rich congestion database uh that could be used for various applications. And also for, yeah, more individual uh case studies depending on. And the research interests, so we can, for example, extract the. Cities that have um relatively low congestion scores overall indices. Uh, while having still a relatively big uh population. Or under contrary, identify um cities that have a high scores overall, except for one or two indices. So yeah, this can be examined more in depth. Um, then after this quite descriptive um indices. We have, we are trying to look at the influence of city size on the indices. Uh, to reveal some potential scaling relationships. Um. Okay. Um. So yeah, we, we see here that the. The population is always significant, so there is a quite strong effect of population on the congestion indices. Uh, which is of course expected. Um. But uh we have um higher scaling indices than what was, what has been found in the literature. For a total congestion, so the regional uh traffic is worse than the total city uh traffic. Um, so yeah, this is the pure effect of city size on the the congestion. And we also wanted to uh study the influence of the word network shape, so the physical uh shape on the traffic. Uh, based on uh previous research that we conducted um and in which we computed uh detail factor for these same uh three hundred cities. Uh, and the detail factor was simply the ratio between um. The the travel distance on the road network and the Euclidean distance, the the straight line distance. Between the same pairs of origins and destinations. Um, here we find that there is no effect of uh the detours or the physical structure of the networks. On the radio uh congestion. Um, the coefficients are not significant while the. The coefficients for the log of the population remain constant. Uh, can not go down. Uh, okay. Um, so yeah, for each indices, we can plot the the. The, yeah, the the index uh against the log of the population. And identify here the scaling relationship. And we can also visualize the indices especially uh on the European continents. Uh, so yeah, I I will show this for every index, um. But yeah, for example, for the A index, uh we see that's um. Yeah, the effect of increased uh distance is lower than actually the effect um. Yeah, the effect of the the population on the congestion. So yeah, when cities grow, uh, traffic and congestion becomes a dominant factor. Because yeah, again, we have a higher relationship that the. That the size uh to distance ratio. So yeah, here we can see the spatial heterogeneity in Europe. Um, and yeah, we see a special auto correlation, so we're going to perform a special uh lag models to correct for this. And we will examine the residuals. Uh, but this is still research to be done. Um, so yeah, in in conclusion, uh, we have three main um analysis and then results. So we can identify the congestion peaks on the twenty four hours um. City profiles. Um, then we um, we can rank cities based on their congestion levels in Europe. And uh we see that there is a large influence of city size on congestion that is challenging. The sustainability um of the monocentric city. Uh, but at the moment, we don't find any influence of the physical words network shape. Um. So yeah, we, our argument is that's um. Um, yeah, in terms of planning implications is that cities, when cities grow. Uh, managing congestion can be hard to protect the centrality. Uh, of the core functions uh and the associated agglomeration benefits because of all these congestion costs. Uh, thank you for your time and attention, and yeah, I will be happy to discuss and answer your questions afterwards.
We can tell you, Benjamin. Uh, thank you. Sorry, my microphone was uh not open. Uh, thank you, Mar Estelle, for presenting a very, very interesting research. Um, now, or as I said, Xiang, he has a question also for you. You can uh read the question in the chat and uh you can answer that in the final discussion. Uh, we can move to the last but not least presentation. Uh, you say way, uh, centrality and city size effects on N O two ground. And tropospheric concentration within European cities. The other authors are Goff, Ricaruso and Reni Lemoine. Uh, Sabrina, can you? No, okay, I suppose that you shared your presentation, okay. You say, okay.
Yes, you can see my screen, right?
Yes, you can make a full screen, okay.
Okay.
You can start.
Okay, hello everyone, this is my presentation. Centrality and city size effects on a lot of ground and tropospheric concentrations within European cities. And you think this is a co-work of me, Joffrey and Remy. Nitrogen dioxide is toxic in ambient conditions. It brings diseases to lungs, hearts and vessels. In two thousand and thirteen, it causes seventy one thousand premature deaths in Europe. Most of the O two values is that above the EU annual limit come from monitor stations in traffic, traffic background. And the O two concentration will raise a lot in a city, which makes it a suitable material, showing how air pollution changes inside cities. Our previous qualitative statistics shows monitor stations and remote sensing admin ways of measuring O two. Our meta-analysis shows for each tenfold increase in population. The logarithmic annual O two surface concentration increases by more than zero point six sixteen. In that case, twenty four cities globally were included. So it will be interesting to find what the value will be when including European cities as much as possible. In our qualitative studies, only three studies describe quantitative relations between population size and O two in more than one city. One focuses on the Church Republic, one does not indicate the name of the cities. And the remaining one limits the population size of the cities. Although the O two concentrations near traffic sites are higher than elsewhere. However, three studies review city centers influence the measured value evidently. But they are all single city studies. Thus, we include distance to city centers as a variable to explore how O two changes within the cities. We only find a seratical model considering the distance from living places to city center. But we haven't found any empirical studies taking distance as a factor for more than one city. Therefore, we aim to derive quantitative scaling relations with the urban population and O two concentrations. We also use empirical data to find how distant to city centers besides the O two. Last, we compared a relative importance between population size and distance to city centers in affecting the O two. We use functional urban arrows as the definition of cities. We include the O two data measured by monitor stations and sending on five P. We get annual O two surface concentrations per station. And daily tropospheric O two columns covering the three hundred and seventy eight F U As. We use population data from two thousand and fifteen and we calculate Euclidean distance. From each station or each cell to the city center of its F U A. To ensure the quality, we filtered annual O two surface concentrations. According to their attributes of verification, validity, time and data coverage. We also select satellite pixels according to their data quality. Most of those pixels with a quality value lowers on twenty five percent. Comes from the boundaries of satellite stripes, the active circle and the apples. So finally, the annual O two surface concentrations and the annual tropospheric O two columns are the sources. So this is how our data look like. This is an example of Hamburg. We can find the distribution of monitoring stations is not homogeneous. Because the location of stations have to fit some criteria of the European Union and is also restricted by the costs. The satellite imagery does not have these problems. This is a port of London. London has more population than Hamburg. And we can see more red and less blue pixels. It seems that larger cities have higher levels of annual tropospheric O two columns. To find out the effects of distance to severe centers and population size on O two. First, we compare this to consult data to see how they relate and whether population size can improve the explanation. Within regress, the annual O two surface concentrations and the annual O two columns respectively. We try different combinations of the independent variables to see how the regression changes readily. We use local local form because we find this is the form of relation. Joint statistical significance in our meta-analysis. We use background of monitor stations as fixed effects when evaluating the O two surface concentrations. Four O two columns where introduced the log minimum annual columns of each city as the background pollution. According to some literatures, it is decided by traffic force, weather conditions and technology level. This is the plot showing the regression of the columns on service concentrations of each city. It shows the surface concentrations are positively correlated with columns. Surface concentrations themselves can explain nearly twenty percent of the columns. The three most populous cities, London, Paris and Istanbul, have high levels of O two. These are the details. Column one shows the results of the previous page. In the column, we add to the population variable. And we can see the R square improves from nineteen percent to thirty one percent. And the population is significantly correlated to the O two columns. This is the plot showing how the log surface concentrations change with log distance and log population. In places having the same distance to city centers. Larger cities have higher level annual O two surface concentrations than small cities. The difference of concentrations between large cities and small cities are more evident in places near city centers. Than in places far away. For each city, the concentrations decay quickly nearest city center, but slowly far away from the city. When the distance to city center increases from one hundred meters to one kilometer. The surface concentrations of a city with one hundred thousand inhabitants decreases by ten microgram per cubic meter. For a city with one million inhabitants, it decreases by seventy microgram per cubic meter. And for city with ten million inhabitants, this value is twenty eight microgram per cubic meter. When the distance to city center increases from one kilometer to ten kilometers. The surface concentration of a city with one hundred thousand inhabitants decreases by seven microgram per cubic meter. For city with one million inhabitants, it decreases by eleven microgram per cubic meter. And for city with ten million inhabitants, this value is nineteen microgram per cubic meter. This is the regression showing how the log surface concentrations change with the log distance and log population. All four spec- specifications having log distance indicates. The log distance is negatively correlated with this log surface concentrations. Three out of four log distance wearable pass the significance testing at a level of zero point one percent. All four specifications having log population show larger cities have higher levels of log surface concentrations. All the local population wearable pass the significance testing at a level of zero point one percent. The dummy variables dampen the negative profile of the log distance and the positive profile of log population. All the traffic background dummy variables are statistically significant at the level of zero point one percent. The R square values show when the specification contains only one independent variable. But distance are less capable of explaining the log surface concentrations than log population. However, after adding the dummy variables, even though distance itself are more powerful in prediction. Than the sum of log distance and log population without the dummy variables. Among the six specifications, the column eight having log distance, log population. And the dummy variables has the strongest ability of estimating the log surface concentrations. It has a long distance coefficient of minus zero point twelve and a lot of population coefficient of zero point nineteen. It can explain fifty percent of the log surface concentrations. The results of relative contributions show the background of monitor stations. Is the most important factor in deciding the log O two surface concentrations. Log distance is the least important factor. This is the plot showing how log columns change with log distance and log population. The patterns of the lines are very similar to the previous one. Larger cities and the places close to city centers always have higher log columns. When the distance to city centers increases from one hundred meters to one kilometer. The columns of the city with one hundred thousand inhabitants decreases by twenty eight micro more per square meter. For a city with one million inhabitants, it decreases by forty seven micro more per square meter. And for a city with ten million inhabitants, this value is seventy seven micro more per square meter. When the distance to city center increases from one kilometer to ten kilometers. The columns of the city with one hundred thousand inhabitants decreases by nineteen micro more per square meter. For a city with one million inhabitants, it decreases by thirty one micro more per square meter. And for a city with ten million inhabitants, this value is fifty micro more per square meter. This is the regression results showing how log columns change with the log distance and log population. All the specification having log distance indicate log distance is negatively correlated with log columns. All the specifications having log population show larger cities have higher levels of log columns. All the log population variables pass the significance testing at a level of zero point one percent. The log minimum columns of each F U A restrain the profile of both the log distance and log population. His coefficient is zero point eighty seven and it passes the significance testing at a level of zero point one percent. Log distance and local population together can explain nearly thirty percent of log columns. Log minimum columns of each F U A improve the regression evidently. The column twelve having log distance, log population and log minimum columns of each F U A. The column twelve having lock distance, lock population and not minimum columns of each F U A. Is the best one to forecast log O two columns. This specification has a lock distance coefficient of minus zero point fifteen. And a lock population coefficient of zero point fourteen. It can expand eighty five percent of lock columns. Results of relative contributions show lock minimum colors of each F U A is the most important factor. Followed by lock population size, the least important factor is the lock distance. Because only three cities have a population of more than ten million, therefore we do a bit more. We apply the same function on the first and the last tense percentile of the cities according to their population. The first tense personnel has one hundred and fifteen cities and the last has thirteen cities. The population size of the two predicted curves are the average population of each group. We calculate the average and standard deviation of the measured O two columns. Every five kilometers from city center to the age of the F U A. We can see that in general, cities with large population expand more than cities with small population. And the mean measured values of each band are close to the predicted curves. It means our specifications are robust and are in line with the real situations. So we have the following conclusions. First, the average annual O two surface concentrations per city. Is positively correlated with the average annual triple strike of the columns per city. And adding population size can describe this relation better. Second, we find the sum of lock distance, lock population with the fixed facts. Can expand fifty four percent of lock and mean O two service concentrations. The coefficient of logarithmic population is very close to the one we derive from our previous meta-analysis. Third, we find the sum of lock distance of population and lock minimum I mean. Mean triple strike on the columns per city can expand eighty five percent of the lock and you need to be frank on the columns. Lock distance is always negatively correlated with. And population is always positively correlated with the lock political traditions. This means that our results are robust and are in line with the real situations. For the last two convolutions, lock distance to city centers is always the least important factor. Lock size is always more important than lock distance. And if the fixed effects of station background or the lock minimum of the column per city appear. Then they are the most important factor. However, the relation between the surface concentrations and the columns are complicated. There are models to estimate the ground level O two from columns. And high column values do mean people have to inhale high concentration O two. We will illustrate this point in our article. And because of the lock functions, so we had to add some explanations about the O two pollution at the city center. The next step, since the background pollution per cities were powerful in expanding the lock O two columns. So we will explore what those factors are for each city. Also, thanks for your attention.
Uh, thank you, Yufei. Uh, oh, you finish also in a perfect time. We have. A lot of time for a good discussion. We have. Xian He, she has three questions for the first three speakers. And probably a question also for you, I can imagine. Okay, Xian, you wrote on chat, but probably it's better if you. You can do the question directly to the speaker.
Sure, I I can do that. And thank you for all the presenters. And I, as you guessed, I do have a question for for Yufei, but maybe that's not a question, it's more like a comment. Uh, Yufei, I I'm not sure if I see everything correctly, but I think in your. Uh, several analysis for the regressions, the Bruges Pagan test are all significant. Uh, do you have an understanding for that one?
Uh, well, uh, so I think we'll investigate this problem more in our article. We're writing this article because this means that our data set um. Is very variance because there are different situations for cities. And I think there are many different different vectors contributing to this phenomenon, but. We need more analyze and so currently we just put this result here. So, yeah.
Yeah, uh, you are right. The the significance of a Bruce Pagan test. Uh, suggests there is a heteroskepticity among observations. And that could be a problem whenever you want to conduct hypothesis testing. And given your research, you are like relying counting the stars. To determine the significance of the independent variables. So I guess that could be a problem. And one of the possible solutions. Uh, I'm not so sure, but maybe you can have a try is to use the weighted linear uh square. Uh, because weighted linear square or W L S for short. Is one of solutions to deal with the issue of heteroskepticity. But I'm not so sure whether that can fit for the situation. Where are you taking the lock to the independent variables? Yeah, maybe you need to devote more regarding this part.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, and what I want to ask Estella a question that. Uh, I want to know more about the congested indexes you have defined in one of your slides. Uh, on that slide, I remember you have a defined four different uh indexes. Uh, the first two in the uh in the top row are about the absolute uh time loss. Which is a summed by a big sigma, which is understandable. And for the um. Later to in the lower uh lower rows, it is a multiplication for everything. And I would like to hear more regarding the explanation for this.
Yeah, thank you very much for your question. Uh, yes, the first row is actually an arithmetic mean. Uh, so yeah, we do a sum, but we have this um weight, area weighting factor. Um, that divides um, yeah, all the the trips by the total area. Um, and then the the second row is a geometric mean. Because we compute the relative trip lengthening, so the. The relationship between the excess travel time and the travel time without any traffic. And as it doesn't make sense to um to sum up our percentages, we just uh multiply them. But yeah, I I admit I did um annotation error um. But the the calculation of the coefficients are correct at the end. Uh, it's just that, yeah, it's um this excess travel time is um. Um, yeah, not multiplied by the weights, but we apply the weight as an exponent on this excess um relative. And then we do a geometric mean.
Geometric mean. Uh, I'm still a little bit slow in regarding understanding this. Uh, are you able to explain a little bit more regarding using this geometric mean?
Um, yeah, so we. We have the relative trip lengthening. So for example, for a trip between one residential cell and the center, we have. Uh, I don't know, twenty percent uh travel time more than if we travel during the peak hours. Uh, compared to traveling uh during a free flow, so at night, for example. So we have these percentages for each uh simulated trip. Um, and then yeah, either we wait this by the area density or by the population density. And then we we have this average um relative um trip lengthening for all the cities of the database.
Okay, and you uh you consider all these trips are independent from each other.
Hmm, exactly. No, it doesn't really make sense to compare them in same unit.
Okay, thank you. I think I I got your idea at least to some extent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, and I have a question for Sabrina. Uh, I think first I want to say your study is a very professional one. You adopt a number of very famous spatial statistics uh indexes to conduct the analysis. And of all of them, I'm in particular interest that you have extended the classical adoption of a list a little bit. You have applied a classical Morse I a little bit. You have applied the um. Like two, three, four orders of a calculation. Uh, are you able to tell me more regarding that one?
Yeah, thank you. Um, first, I used the Geoda, as I said during the presentation. Uh, which has some interesting built-in features. Uh, within the queen contingency, which basically looks at whether polygons share. Borders or even points. Um, you can choose to extend the contingency for as many levels as you wish. Um, I I I will not say about the first level of contingency because I I think we are all familiar with. So surrounding polygons. When you extend the analysis to the second level of contingency, you have two options. Either you do a cumulative analysis, which is what I did. Or you look at second orders polygons only. Within the first method, uh, what we are looking at is whether um. A feature, uh, the values of the feature are close to the surrounding ones. But with the surrounding ones, we don't mean only the one that share borders, but also the second order polygons. This means that the analysis, the the neighbors are in higher number. If we don't take the cumulative analysis and look at second orders only. We are excluding the first order, so this is not the cumulative. But what the program does is um. Looking at a second order and referring to the first order. So it looks back and forward to understand what's the relation between the second order and a polygon we are looking at. So I thought it was more appropriate to look at cumulative analysis because I wanted to understand. To what extent um the values are auto-correlated. So how far does this auto-correlation extend? I thought that this was important because I'm not looking at, um, how do I say, at point value. So how um, what is the value of a specific ecosystem service in a certain point? But I averaged them within a municipality. So it was important to look at what happens around. Because I wanted to have clusters of municipalities and to understand how they are similar was important. And to what distance and extent. That way, that's the reason why I also looked at higher orders of contingency.
Oh, so long story short, you can correct me if my understanding is not correct. Uh, when you are calculating this Morse I, uh, you expand the definition of a neighbors. Traditionally, while we are doing the Morse I, we define the neighbors are directly sharing the border or directly share the border and the point. Depending if you are using a rook or queen case. But in your case, you have a kind of a big family of neighbors, those. Those neighbors of the neighbors are also considered in the calculation of the current point of interest to derive the Morse I.
That's perfect. And it works because I use the cumulative model. If I haven't used that, then it would be different. But you made it. It's correct.
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, I also have a comment, but maybe my comment is also not correct. Uh, because I have noticed in your slides, you have conducted a a principal component analysis. Uh, regarding the seven variables, you have a pick to evaluate the ecological services. And you set maybe the three and the fifth loading as the cut off to cut off a threshold. But later you have a conducted a cluster analysis. I personally think there's not a necessarily association between the number of loadings and the number of clusters. Uh, if we want to do the clustering, uh, the reason here is that. I think if we pick the first of five components as loadings. Uh, that means we are basically re-project our original parameter. So here is the original seven variables you have chosen to a new space. And then that new space is a five dimensional. And each dimension is a new synthesized variable. And yeah, it's our job to have a new name for these five different dimensions. And the point in this five dimension uh air space will be the like. New projection of the original seven uh seven dimensional space. So I think that's the meaning for us to um cut off at the certain loadings. With the purpose of the dimension reduction. Uh, so it's not necessarily related to the clustering, but of course clustering have its own importance.
Yeah, I I I do agree with you. Uh, the reason why choosing a principal component analysis. Is that is that in this sense, it works like an explorative analysis. So um, I only add seven variables, but imagine you had, I don't know, twenty variables. How do I get a rough idea of the number of clusters I am looking for? That's the basic reason why to use principal component analysis. But it, I agree with you, it was not necessary. But um, it gives you an a rough indication right from the outset. Uh, of how many cluster you should look for. But this is not enough because when you do this, it's always useful to understand what happens if you change the number of clusters. So thank you. That was a right spot on.
Yeah, thank you. And I believe I have one last question for the first presenter. Uh, yeah, my my question is kind of a simple because I'm really, really newbie in your area. Uh, the only one thing I don't really understand that, uh, why the value, uh, uh. Assessment of the carbon dioxide retention or you have used the word sequential. Sorry, that's what is even new to me. You are matter in euros rather than using the kilograms. So I would like to know more regarding this.
Yes, uh, well, you see, when you estimate the value of ecosystem services. You can rely either on monetary uh methods or on non-monetary methods. I choose uh the first one uh in order to allow a future comparability uh with. All the ecosystem services, uh, because like for instance, I uh reestimated. Uh, regulating ecosystem service uh that we could express in many uh unit of measurement. Uh, we choose, uh, like for instance, if we would have chosen um kilograms of CO two. Uh, we will not be able to make any operation between this value. And another value that we would estimate of another for instance class of ecosystem service such as. Uh, regulating or cultural ecosystem service. Uh, so we choose the monetary approach in order to be able in the future. Uh, for my PhD thesis, develop a synthetic indicator, which is basically the aim of my research. For uh like the three classes of ecosystem uh services. And uh also the reason, another reason uh that is to inform. Like to, the aim would be to inform uh the administrations. Uh, about the um economic value of ecosystem services. So we believe that this actually would be a useful information that. Uh, we have to be careful about though, uh, because it's not that we are comparing. Like, of course, if you compare a green area to a built area, the built area would always have a higher economic value. So it's not in order to uh make a comparison in that sense, but it's in order to give. Um, a unit of measurement, a quantification for the public administration of the in the urban context. And yeah, so that's basically it. I hope I answered your question.
I said my question partially because I do understand it's very important to. to translate the professional terms into the words that the government, people and stakeholders can understand. But still, I think there are some risky point here. Three points. The first one is that euro as a currency, we know every currency will have inflation. So as long as you want to conduct a time series analysis, like to evaluate how Europe as a whole performed in 2020 in comparison with 2010, you have to take the change of the internal value of a euro into consideration as it's a change every minute. The second situation is that we, we know that the carbon dioxide do not have a price by its nature. We have a price because we have a trading mechanism. Like as we know, Europe properly have the most advanced carbon trading system worldwide. China also have a carbon trading systems. And you know, as this trading system evolve, the price of the carbon or a price of emission rate will also fluctuate. So if we say, like this year, the trading system have saved the money for, say, one billion euro and the next year is a save for another billion euro, even we do not consider the internal value of a euro itself, simply because of the changing of the price of the, like the emission, the, the price of the emission or the price of a certified emission CER, then we will have a different valuation of the value based on the same amount of the greens, green gas houses. And I think there's a third reason which can be more important. Like maybe humankind, the understanding to the global warming can be limited. Now we have considered the carbon dioxide and methane and several other gases are the GHG. But maybe there is our other gases. And not all of the gases have a good trading system, ours carbon dioxide. If just in case, we do not trade methane, for example, for technical difficulties. But nobody can negate that methane is also a very significant gas in terms of a global warming. We cannot neglect it. So if simply because we don't trade it, it don't have a value, it doesn't consider into our, like the endeavors to mitigate the green global warming, I think that could be an unfair evaluation in terms of greenhouse gases. Yeah, that's my.
Yeah, like, thank you for your observation. Every time you try to quantify in euros, a, an environmental value, of course, like it's very risky because the risk is that you, like the critic that can be moved is that you are monetizing a non-monetizable good. The, but also when you give a value to ecosystem service, which is important in order to quantify a phenomenon, you are introducing a model. And when you introduce a model, you introduce some hypotheses and some approximations. Therefore, the limit of your model depends on the aim of your analysis. So if my aim is to give a quantification of an ecosystem service in order to be able to make operations with this quantity with all the kinds of values, I have to find a common unit of measurement, which can be euros or can be something else. We did not find anything else which is not euro. It might be possible, but it looked like the easiest. Of course, it is a model and therefore it has its limitations being euros. The limitation that you criticize of the changing of the price, we try to limit it by expressing the value in annual value. So it's, of course, it depends, it depends on the year. So in this regard, we did not estimate a, like a value for the whole twelve, twenty and like for the six years range, but we estimated a value per year. And so the change of the price, of course, is a limitation of the model which we introduced in the bias chapter. But I believe that every time you model something, you have some limitation that have to be explicit and that you have to make explicit, but they are not evitable. So this is the limitation that we choose to adopt.
Yeah, I understand. Can I step in just, just to clarify? Sorry. I think that what it's missing here is the fact that the project Julia is, is trying to, 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 to wrap up is the fact of combining several different classes of ecosystem services. And we have the natural, of course, or the, the natural base, which are the easiest to grasp and quantify in different ways. And we do have though also the cultural ones, which by nature are extremely elusive. And so the only common unit of measure that we have found so far to make those two things, those two different dimensions to talk together is the monetary transformation. I agree with your skepticism, but fluctuation, yeah, it's true. We could have some, some, we, we are introducing errors. But we have to remember that what we are saying now is specific reference in time and space. So not just in space, but also in time. So it's valid now. And as Julia said, our aim is to develop a tool to talk with the public administration at the local level. And even if it results in fluctuation within a four years range, which is the timeframe, the horizon of usual at local administration, that doesn't vary that much. But money, it's a language that everybody understand really well. Because they develop their policies talking in money terms. And also the general public is something that can easily grasp. I would say that there is maybe one major concern that goes far above the fluctuation and the errors that we could be introducing by trying to convert everything to a monetary value, which is the fact that we are actually valuing an ecosystem service. And as you said, we need whatsoever to help climate change. And so we, we have to improve the capacity of green infrastructures to store carbon. That's one of the solution, of course, not, not just the only one. But valuing them, we implicitly, we are implicitly assuming that that can be introduced in a cost benefit analysis, which in economic terms is something that we would like to avoid as much as possible. So actually, ba- basically, if someone else has a good suggestion to find a good unit of measure through which we can combine together natural-based ecosystem services and cultural-based ecosystem services, we would adopt that method immediately. Because we want to avoid the risk of implicitly assuming that we can, you know, include ecosystem services in some sort of cost benefit analysis. Because at the end, a public administration could say, hey, but you know, maintaining and managing that ecosystem service is more expensive than just curing the harm of not having it. So I would go for the, for the least expensive solution, which is what we do not want to go for.
Okay, thank you for, Xiangyi, for your interesting question. I wanted to add just something. I'm not one of the author. But it's important to consider the, the value in error or in other monetary system because it's interesting to, the, for the assessment, for the decision maker that probably is not expert in climate changes, in ecosystem services, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. If you explaining kilos, probably he said, okay, but one kilos, one tons is the same. But if you explain monetary, probably he understands a little bit more, probably. Not everything, but a little bit more. I don't know the quality.
You will understand, especially the policymaker.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Okay, there are two questions. We have other two questions. Danny asked to, Danny Breitman.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you to all the presenters for your interesting presentations. I have a question in line of the last discussion, more or less, only one question, in fact. I believe that city majors are more concerned with property taxes, for example, than with ecosystem services. Unless those ecosystem services are the cultural services, which in fact are amenities or trees that are nice to see and people are willing to pay in order to live near there. You, Julia, expressed, defined a very interesting research about the value. And I think it's very appropriate for this case of analysis. But the question is, if you believe that it is possible to monetize several ecosystem services, not cultural ones, but physical ecosystem services. Let's assume that there is a market not only for CO2, but also for noise and for health and for clean air, et cetera, et cetera. If you believe that it's possible to convince a city major at some point to say, okay, using exactly this kind of a cost benefit analysis that Federico seems not to like too much. But still, if it is possible to convince it and to say, okay, look, it's preferable not to build in those plots because you will get something else. And if, if some kind of mechanism of exchange of money, for example, say, subventions from the central government for ecosystem services exist, you will get more money than if you allow more houses to be built there, for example. Do you believe it is possible?
Well, I believe firstly that it's a risky edge. And secondly, that it's, it would be quite the opposite. Since it's like what we would like, what we want to avoid is that the public administration make a cost benefit analysis among building, I don't know, a commercial center, a mall, like or residences, instead of building a park where children can play and that provide heat island mitigation or noise reduction or temperature reduction and so on. And so this is exactly what we want to avoid. So we would not introduce this kind of analysis in the terms of saying, okay, this is, I don't know, like seven billion euro for making a park for children and elderly people so they have a higher quality of life and health, rather than making a mall. Of course, in economic terms, like, like, I don't know, like, yes, economic discourses just don't agree with environmental discourses. So our aim would be quite the opposite of this one and would be instead to quantify some values. So we believe that quantifying the value of a different kind of ecosystem services would be useful for the decision makers in order to have a quantification of the quality of the different green areas in the city. So that on one side, they don't have to rely on qualitative information from like inside specific analysis. So they don't have to rely on a bunch of scientists or people that go to every single green area of the city every once in a while to like detect the nature-based and cultural-based quality of these areas, which is also important and relevant, but we cannot rely only on that, in my opinion. And also they cannot rely merely on their quantity because quantity itself is an important information, but it's not sufficient for obvious reason, reasons to develop and adequate policy about green infrastructures and green areas in cities. So we want to quantify the different ecosystem service with a unique, unit of measurement in order, in order for public administration to have an overview on the green areas and on the quality of the green areas that they have in the cities. And also in order for European policies, like of course Italy, to be coordinated among them. Of course, the, the goal of our analysis is not to compare with other kind of monetary value. It's just that we need an, an unit of measurement that can be common. We would like not to use euros because of course it's very risky. But we need one because we need to quantify. So, so yeah, that's, I, I really believe that if we would compete with buildings and malls and all the economic values, we would lose like really hard, really badly.
Thank you very much for your response. I want to say only, only a word and to finish it because I don't know how much this topic interests the other participants. But I think that we, as a community that works with quantification in general of ecosystem services have a problem. And we, I, I think that we are trapped in some sense in a kind of internal contradiction between things that we try to do and our objectives. And I think that this is something that is worth to think about. I'm not saying that something is good, bad, wrong or, or, or right, but it is worth to think about. Thank you very much.
Danny, I just want to expand a little bit. While talking with Julia, is on the one hand, she said it's something that we do not want to, to do, but it's something that we have to do by working in an economic, in economic departments. It's a way of communicating with our colleagues that do strong theoretical economic analysis. And I do believe that for some services, what you said, it's really easy to say. Like for example, think about repario trees preventing metropolitan areas from being flooded. Well, you can actually say, you know that leaving those trees here or planting more stronger and deep root arboreal cover in here, you can prevent the damages that costed, I don't know, million of euros in, in past years. And that would be very easy to do and to convince, say hello and fly away. So, so for some ecosystem services, that could be done very easily. For some other, the risk is, you know, we have this park like Central Park in New York. Is it, is it a lot better? I mean, is it more economically convenient from a public administration basing their, their accounts on revenues and tax, and tax and property taxes? To say, ah, why don't we develop a little, a bit, a bit more, just a bit more? So you, you know what is the, the real estate values of one square foot in, in New York, like in central New York, Manhattan? So can you imagine that? That is why we are forced to take, we, it's not something we would like to take. I know that in some areas around here in Toscany or Hilly areas, they're applying the same, let's say, framework for forest ecosystem services and it's working quite well. So actually, they are suggesting community leaders to think about the territorial value and the, the economic value that forests are actually giving them every year instead of having to spend for, I don't know, to, to prevent, for example, a landslideing. Okay, this is the thought behind.
Thank you, Federigo. You have a young sign. And Ron, thank you for your, for your question. Didier, it's a pleasure to, to, to see you.
Hello. Maybe if Geoffrey has a question online with the previous topic, he can ask it because I would like to ask a question to Estelle on a different topic.
Yeah, it was to contribute to the discussion here, don't want to take too much, but.
Yeah, it was to to contribute to the discussion here, don't don't want to take too much, but maybe, I mean, this is a big discussion on the accounting for for ecosystem services. So I think we we cannot really solve this here, but internally, you could also look at balance, actually, especially for carbon. So while while looking at the effect of uh the the removal of carbon, then then you can also weight it against the emissions, actually. And at least it's internally correct. And I think in terms of speaking to the local people eh policy, look, we have that much emissions and this is the 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 quantity that we want. So in terms of percentage, and you can also discuss that locally at least. Uh and if you destroy some forest and because you're building, then what is the amount of carbon emitted for that? And then you compare the carbon emitted towards the carbon that is removed. So basically, you have an internal consistency rather than searching for an external consistency. Yeah, so this is really about building a balance at the scale of a city, which of course is is wrong, because at the end, the city can decide that if even if you have um a lot of uh sequestration, uh or you cannot do the sequestration, you can buy actually credits and and make forests elsewhere. But but at least it it gives the policymakers an idea of how much, um yeah, um the the sequester against how much you will further emit, uh provided that we can calculate that balance quite well. So where they situate themselves in the balance and then it it does work only for carbon, obviously, not for 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 pollution, uh but but for carbon, please, it would work. But yeah, that's just for food for service, I suppose.
Yeah. Uh, thank you for your observation. Um, so we did estimate eh in order to make the last step of our analysis, the carbon sequestered eh from trees for every year, because it was a necessary step. Uh, we did not compare it with the emission, because the aim of the paper for two reasons. The first one is because the aim of the paper was to relate the phenomenon with the phenomenon of soil consumption in Rome. So it was about relating these two phenomena and to give a quantification of the effects. And also because eh in um eh if you eh see other studies on this topic, for instance, once one that I eh cited in the paper, eh one is from Francis Parrot eh from two thousand and fourteen eh that eh takes as a case study the Municipality of Barcelona. When you compare the CO2 retained by trees and with the CO2 eh emissions in a city, like the two results are really of two different eh um magnitudes. So eh the trees do have an impact on eh suppressing and retaining CO2. But of course, the solution to pollution is not to plant trees everywhere. It's to eh it's evident that the solution to pollution is to reduce reduce emissions somehow. But eh so that that would be eh another interesting eh analysis, of course, eh that would eh like in man, probably show this result that was showed from other papers. But eh so eh yeah, so the the aim was to link this to phenomenon and phenomena and quantify them. But yeah, there will be, of course, interesting and will be eh an interesting eh opening of the topic.
Yeah, but but again, eh the balance indeed is very bad, but eh here, because you look at the soil consumption, what is the emission related to that consumption? So really, you have the direct impact. Of course, the balance is very bad, especially if you have firms and then and big industries. Uh, that that's that's over. The game is over. It's it's one divided by thousands or something. But but if you want to relate to the soil consumption, there you have an opportunity to make the the message correct, actually. But.
Yeah, yeah. If we would study only that specific indicator and not try to relate it with other phenomenon, that would be, of course, uh totally appropriate. And yeah, that will be absolutely interesting as an analysis. Thank you.
Okay, I have a other question. Probably, Didier, you want to eh have a question for other speakers?
Yes, thank you. So as Danny, I found the presentations very interesting. So Estelle, I have a question for you. Um, in your research, you 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 showed that there is no relation between congestion and detours, straightness of the the roots, if I understood well. I found this very interesting. So do you think we could design a kind of optimal network by reducing the distances on the roads and keeping keeping the same properties in terms of congestion? But on the other side, we maybe we would have to lose some eh accessibility sites, you know, due to the the reduction of the dens- density, the road density. So is it eh eh something you you reflect on before or any idea?
Hmm, yes, we here indeed, we don't see any effect of the detour factor on the congestion. But yeah, previously, we tested for the effects of the detour factor simply um the effect of eh city size, sorry, eh simply on the detour factor. And there, yeah, we already saw eh interesting eh patterns. So we saw um an increase of the detour when the city size increases. But this is when we consider the entire functional urban area. But then we see that the relationship reverses when we now we scale cities closely eh around their center. Uh, meaning that the the detour um is eh lower in only in the center of big cities, uh which was a very surprising result. Um, so yeah, it has a, yeah, city size has an effect on distances, but yeah, apparently not on congestion. Uh, so yeah, you are asking whether an optimal um world network eh could be designed. Are you mean to to reduce eh traffic as much as possible?
Yes, and to reduce eh emission, pollutant emission due to distance traveled. Wow.
Hmm. Um, yeah, I think here the issue is not really on the shape of the world network, but rather on the the distribution of the population inside cities. I think this is the the main factor uh inducing this congestion and not the physical infrastructure.
Okay, thank you. I have another little question for you, Faye. Um, eh in your results, you you showed that eh when you consider the F U A population, the results are much better, if I remember well, of your regressions, oh?
Uh, yes, lock population is more significant than longer distance.
And so eh I was wondering if there is not eh behind eh a size effect? Because F U A are very big eh aggregated eh areas. And eh well, it's it's strange to see a so big difference between eh um the different factors and this one, which is very strong. So that was, that was just a eh question. Uh, I I don't know if it's a real reason, but.
Um, I'm not quite understand about your size effects, but the the values of F U A population comes from the data set. So for each city, there is only one value of population and the figure is not aggregated. It's just a one value for one integrated era, so.
You mean, one F U A is one city?
Yes, one city has one population value.
Okay, so F U A is not an aggregation of eh eh population located in different cities?
Uh, so this data comes from the G H S L data set and when they derive this value. So they use eh the distribution of people who have jobs and who come commute to the city area. So but we just eh take the values in, so we 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 haven't eh we haven't investigated more on this issue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Didier, for your question. Also, Federigo has a question for you, Faye.
Yes, I, yeah, um, I did have a question for you, Faye, but that could be directed to Sabrina as well. Of my chemistry reminding, my chemistry memories are so bad. So um I know that I mean, the working with eh nitrogen oxide um is eh is not so easy to store and capture as eh as eh as with CO2. Uh, therefore, I'm not so familiar with the green infrastructures, because I have seen a lot of methods like um the 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 using constructions of specific materials to transform nitrogen oxide in eh in nitrile cases. But I would like to know from your experience, if there is any cities or any locations eh in which they have implemented a sort of green infrastructures or mostly bay, mostly a natural based infrastructures, which showed to have a good efficiency in capturing eh an O2.
Okay, so um, well, actually, we haven't investigated this question. I mean, so this is a scaling rules for all European cities. Uh, so we just eh take the values in and what the measure, what the values are from the instruments or from the satellite, so we just take it. And I believe there are some cities eh that take some measures, but eh so since this is eh, I mean, we investigate all the cities and so we haven't done that yet.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, before closing this session, eh please open your camera, your eh and we can have a picture all together. I'll do a screenshot and eh I stand doing the plenary closing session, just because eh this is the tradition in S P two T G to having the long discussion and eh in Zoom it's not easy, but in this session, we also realize that eh in a certain way is possible. And thank you for all participants for eh for your nice presentations, for for your eh animating discussion. Probably Federico Amato has to say something about the special issues with Antonino Marvuglia that can collect several of your papers.
Uh, yes, thank you very much, first of all, for participating to our session. And then with some of the other organizer of this session, we are actually editing the special issue on the same topic of the session. So in case you have interest, I can just drop the link um in the chat and you can have a look, or you can simply contact me via email and I can provide you more details.
Yeah, it's just, it's just, thank you, Federico. Just to say, eh they call it a special topic rather than special issue, because it collects five different journals. So it's not, the the papers are not eh coming from only one, but eh from five different M D P I journals. Eh, they 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 collect papers eh and to organize these that for this reason, they call it a special topic rather than special issue. Uh, yeah, Federico has sent the the link. Thanks a lot.
Okay, and five minutes, we start the next session and eh eh now, also I recommend to continue to to follow eh eh this conference and also I suggest that eh three o'clock Greenwich time or four o'clock Central Europe time. The keynote eh by Rachel Franklin, probably very interesting, and also the closing eh ceremony. Now, please open eh the the camera of your PC and eh we can have a a picture all together. Okay. Okay, hi.
This.
Page two. Oh. It's a pleasure for me eh to see a lot of friends that I have not seen for a lot of time and eh okay, eh on behalf of all organizers, eh I say that this eh I say thank you to all participants and eh and eh hope to see you in next edition of this conference, probably surely personally and eh with the main feature of this of this conference. Okay, thank you so much. Bye bye.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Bye.